Good evening. This is the Select Board meeting for Monday, September 22, 2025. Called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the call to order, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Open forum. Do we have anyone here for open forum? Chief, you have for just hit a few? Nice, I like it. Okay, seeing nobody's here for open forum, I will close that. We have a public hearing at 6:00 PM, which is right now, with, why don't you read the notice if you don't mind, Kathy?
Yep. You want me to read the 6:00 PM? Under the provisions of Chapter 166 of general laws and any additions thereto or amendments thereof, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on September 22, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, 02333. On the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining, in protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Plymouth Street, National Grid to install one SO pole on Plymouth Street, beginning at a point approximately 175 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and Plymouth Street, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes.
Thank you. I don't think we have a representative here from National Grid.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, they are aware of the time, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So, postpone?
Postpone it. Do you think?
Well, put it on the table.
Okay.
See, you know, if they show up a little later, then.
That's fine.
Table it for now?
All right. Yep, okay. Our next appointment's at 6:15, but Charlie's email, they're not going to be here.
Correct.
Yeah, I spoke to the.
Nevyn?
Nevyn, yeah, I think that's his name here. Yesterday, I think what you had said to them, so this is the group Equity Advisors. They own the Hard Hanks Building and the Signature Health Building. We're just working the final details of our agreement for the sewer project with them. They just want to get more specific on the property that is tied in.
Mm-hmm.
Which would be the Hard Hanks right away. So, we'll just have to talk to Chris. I think he brought that up too many ways regarding that terminology. Also confirmed that he'll be at the opening on October 1st, so maybe we can do something there. Would we have to, I mean, I don't know if you guys are available. Did you get, did you send them an email? Yeah, okay. So, October 1st, like a little groundbreaking, whatever it is.
What time?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock? Yeah, I know.
See what I can do.
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to avoid everybody being, if it was, because I didn't know what the weather's going to be next Wednesday, if it's going to be 15 degrees out, like have people have it a bit warmer than an 11, than a 9, for instance.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, if you can make it less snow. I think as long as we get two there. Do we have, would we ever call the meeting? I mean, if we're all the same.
I can post.
Was it 10:01?
Yeah, 10:01. I think, well, I'm sure Allison got the invite as well. Yeah, then if we have to do something, then we could just.
Yeah.
It's just a formality at this point.
We're at Eastbridge, are we at the, yes, that works, sorry.
All right. That's all I need to know, right? Hey, you can tell us the rest of your day.
No, 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 no.
Okay, yeah. And you'd see if you can.
I have a department head meeting on the first Wednesday of the month, so.
Okay, is that the first one? Yeah, the first of October, first, yes.
And I have book club in the afternoon, so.
Oh, all right. We'll be done by then, hopefully. If we extended the book club, we really got issues. Yeah, it's going to be Mark and Burr, just going to, we invited the, in order to take the state and Fed money, they'd like to be there and shake hands, kiss babies, you know, high five and all that stuff. So, that's it. So, anyways, they'll be there for that, and hopefully we can, if we can, we'll just sign and do whatever we have to do, just taking their money, so. Okay. We have town council at 6:30, so we've got a while. Go through some of the action items. See if we can bang these things out.
Vote and signing of sanitary sewer connection agreement between.
Oh, yeah, we're going to pass over that, I'm sorry.
Nope, no, good. Approve the minutes of September 8, 2025, Select Board's meeting.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve or not release the minutes of the August 11, 2025, and September 8, 2025, Select Board Executive Session Meetings.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve the request from Chief of Police Michael Higgins to surplus the following item as the equipment is no longer functional due to age or damage, TLC, 43-inch TLC television.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Discussion. Seems pretty straightforward. TV's broke, get rid of it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve education incentive request from the Clerical Union for Julie Ingar.
Ingar Giola.
Ingar Giola.
Ingar Giola.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. Charlie?
Just part of the union contract. People with certain degrees get an educational incentive.
All right, good for her. Congratulations, Julie Ingar.
Yeah, congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve signage and event permit request from Danielle Vanu of the East Bridgewater Business Association for placement of golf hole signs on municipal and school properties, September 28 through October 19, 2025, and use of Town Common for EBBA Expo and Family Day on October 19, 12 to 3:00 PM, set up at 8:00 AM, break down by 4:30 PM.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Discussion. I did talk to Danielle last week. I'm happy to see they're coming back. It's a little later this year, just trying to coordinate it, so, you know, it was a good day. People seem to enjoy coming out and getting free stuff.
Swag.
Yeah.
Free swag.
Free swag, absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve signage and event permit request from the Kiwanis Club of East Bridgewater to display an eight-by-two promotional banner on municipal property from November 15 through December 15, and the use of the Town Hall parking lot for Christmas tree sales scheduled to take place from November 22 through December 22, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Event set up November 15 through 16, 2025, between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, contingent upon receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance.
Second.
All right, motion's made. Yep, motion made seconded. Discussion.
November 15 is the town election, so I just don't want to have happen with the parking lot what happened during the annual town election.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we can change November 15, because I'll need to have.
Go to the 16th?
In and out for the election. It won't mess up with the parking.
Is it still the same? Are we right up, right up front here? Same setup? Yeah, in the corner over here, yeah, yeah.
And they're not going to be, you're not going to be selling yet. There'll be some.
No, we're just setting up.
I know, last time they were setting up too, and they blocked off my parking, so I just want to make sure. Okay.
All right. Well, luckily, we have the guy in charge over here.
Is that the day the trees are being delivered, or, okay.
To get the stands ready or something?
Putting up the shed and stuff.
Oh, okay.
What is the, what is, does that, I mean, now that we have you, now that we have Zach here to answer the questions, I apologize. I didn't know that you were, what does that entail? Is it like, how many vehicles will be here? Where would they be parked, kind of? Okay.
Drop the shed off, maybe four trucks.
Okay.
And maybe a trailer.
So, maybe what we could do then, I don't know if you guys, if we would be able to facilitate this, or would be able to put, maybe block off, you know, five spaces for them so that they could park there?
We always do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to be able to get in and out like.
It's not a like all hands-on-deck Kiwanis event type of thing. It's very specific, limited group of people.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Yeah, they'll, they'll take care of that. And if they don't, you call Carol.
But thank you for reminding us.
Okay, seeing that we worked out the logistics of the Christmas tree sales, we wish you guys luck.
Yeah.
Again, as always.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it? Do we have any extras? Do we have any?
No.
What does that look for?
What?
It's very, very small agenda.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm just making sure.
They were trying to give us a breakup for lunch.
We got some, I'm going in. I've never seen that look before. I'm like, boy, what did I do wrong? Because I've done things wrong before.
What did you do? You ran for public office.
Well, before, it's going back a while. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Announcements, staff reports. Lee, we'll start down with you. What do you mean, no? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Trying to fill time here.
Yeah, right, right.
I know, I am, sorry, I don't have anything either.
Nothing? All right.
No, I mean, you know, we're going to be talking about the special town meeting tonight.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll go over that, absolutely.
So, there's two special town meetings coming up.
Okay.
Monday, October 27th, at 7:00.
Yep.
At the junior senior high school. And the other one is Monday, November 10th, at 7:00. And that one is specifically for the central school project.
The 10th one is?
November 10th.
Yes.
At 7:00 PM.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And both of these, also the special town meetings are at the junior senior high school.
Yes, 7:00.
Yeah, that's good. Public forum for the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
6:00 at the Central Elementary School, the public forum tomorrow, and the designers.
Back in the cafeteria?
Yeah.
Okay, great. 6:00 PM tomorrow night. All right, thank you. Anyone else got anything? Want to, you know, pitch, or Andy, you got something you want to throw out there? You got something going on?
If you want to stick to my item, I'd love to.
Yeah. Where are you in the, on the agenda? Are you, you got a meeting, a special slot?
It's a warrant item.
It's a warrant.
Oh, okay.
Well, we can't do that early, sorry.
Sit down and relax.
Peter, we have the sewer project ongoing. We're going to have Summer Street now closed both on Saturday, this coming Saturday, on the 27th, and then on Monday, the 29th.
Yep.
I think it's something from like 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay.
Folks are going to have to detour if they have to go down, if they want to go down Summer. Obviously, residents will be able to get down there, but everybody else, they'll have to use Winter and Route 14 to get around the whole Summer Street area. This is for laying of the pipe. They have to do some test borings on Saturday, some, you know, opening some holes there in Summer Street, and then I believe the line is actually being laid out on that Monday.
Okay.
We are posting notices up on the town website about that, but not a place to make that announcement. But they've been doing the brush cutting, everything that needs to be done along the rights of way, where an easement's where the line's going to be. They've been working over on Thatcher Street, and so the work is actually happening.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, a lot of work. A lot of clearing, a lot of trees out. Any residents at this point? Everybody good?
We had one resident call about how early that they were starting work.
Okay.
But it's the normal 6:30, 7:00 AM time that you would have for construction projects.
Right. All right. That's good. One ain't bad. That's good. Take one. It's when 15, 20 call, that's an issue. All right, what else you got, Charlie?
I don't have.
Nothing either?
Well, I mean, it's just, it's miscellaneous stuff. I mean, I let you want to talk about the fact the fire department went out to bid for ambulance billing, and bids are due tomorrow.
Okay.
11:00 AM. Green Communities, I'm working Vol. Colley Plan Council to come up with a year-end report, and also our annual report, then also the grant report for the work that we completed just last month.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to, we weren't able to apply this fall because we are Scott Flaws. We're Scott Flaws on the MBTA Communities. It's another grant program. We're no longer eligible.
Right, right. Unfortunately.
That's for sure. I don't have anything else at this point.
All right. Good, okay.
I would recommend you have a recess for 15 minutes.
We can do that. Well, we got the board discussion first, so you never know. It might be something really pressing, hard.
Aye.
What you want to talk about?
Are you going to talk about the chili chowder festival?
I wasn't going to talk about that. We can.
Chili chowder festival is Saturday.
Andy, that is, what's the date? This Saturday?
This Saturday, actually.
This Saturday.
This Saturday is the chili chowder festival?
30th Annual Chili Chowder Festival.
Big event number.
East Bridgewater.
Yeah.
27th, 2025, rain or shine.
Mm-hmm.
It starts at 12:00 noon to 6:00 PM, $20 per person at the gate, and $15 pre-sale tickets at the club.
Mm-hmm.
Free parking.
Do you have to be a certain age to attend that event?
21.
21-plus event.
Just plugging it. Okay, well, if you're 21, you've got nothing to do, go down to the chili chowder fest. Get some chili chowder, and I think they serve alcohol there a little bit.
At the commercial club, do they really? I hadn't heard.
Once in a while, once in a while.
And I would have said the.
Satellite parking, yeah.
The forum for the central school tomorrow night, but.
Yep.
Melanie beat me to that one, so.
Absolutely. And, I mean, now that I know, happy birthday to.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Carol's birthday, that was what, yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Yesterday, great.
60.
60?
60.
Just a number. I'm telling you, it's just a number.
It is just a number, I.
Well, we've got about 18 minutes.
I could have brought leftover cake. I had a lovely party at my home by my daughter and my dear friend, and it was very, very nice.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
Congratulations, happy birthday.
Dale wasn't there?
Dale was there, but he's, you know, he was like support team, but not the A-team.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
He like paid for things.
Well, that's a lot of support. That's the support I like. Right, good. All right, so I guess that's what we'll do. We'll recess for 15 minutes or so, and then we'll come back when we have our next. Appointment, which is at 6:30 with town council, town accountant, town administrator, and so on and so forth. All right, guys go get a drink, slice of cake down at Carol's house, if you want to run down there.
There is some leftover cake.
Thank you. All right, we're back at the, the meeting, Select Board meeting.
It's still the 22nd.
It's still the 22nd. We had a discussion set up for 6:30 and then for 7, but we're going to move that, those discussions.
Well, 6:30 we're doing now.
Oh, we are doing over the warrant?
Yes, we are, because they, these folks have.
Oh, okay. That's great. That makes me feel bad.
But the National, the National Grid hearing postponed until.
Oh, yeah, postponed on that one. I think we already, we already.
Well, you're in session now, so if you want to vote to continue the National Grid hearing to the 6th.
What's the next, the next meeting is the 6th, okay.
Right, because we have Columbus Day sitting there on the 13th.
That's true, okay.
So, maybe put it in for, what, 6 or 6:15? Do we have anything on the agenda for next, for 6th already?
We'll confirm, but we'll try to.
Say 6:15 to start with, that was the time we had there. Well, this is 6 o'clock, we can do 6, whatever. Doesn't matter.
10:06?
On 10:06, yeah, we'll move the hearing with National Grid on the pole. Moving on Plymouth Street for the 6th. All right, as stated, I can hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, further discussion on the moving of the pole? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointment with whoever's left. You want to come on up, and we can talk about the warrant? Is that what we want to do? Come on up, Andy. I know you're here.
Board of Health.
Yeah, you're here for sure. You got anything else on here? Katie, you got something? No? Andy, you.
Library does, fire chief and library.
Okay. Fire chief's got something too, yeah.
He's got like half the warrant.
Come on up, say something. Do you, you need to discuss anything on here, or we need?
I don't know, I was just here just in case anyone had.
Okay.
Yeah, we invite them here.
Yeah, yeah, I get you. Okay. Well, it seems like you have something to discuss.
Yes, sir, I do.
Andy, okay, Andy Hudson, Board of Health Chair. What do you got?
Good evening, Mr. Jemmin. The board would like to make an amendment to our warrant from the amount of $10,000 to $8,500.
Okay. What, do you know what number that?
Number one.
Number one.
Number one, oh, beautiful, right out of the gate.
He's number one.
All right, Charlie, walk me through this. We just, do we have to vote on that to make a change, or?
Um, no, because we're, it's still in draft at this point.
Okay.
We, you know, the Board of Health is.
8,500.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Board of Health are the ones who had asked for the article to be on the warrant. Here's representative from the Board of Health, and we'll just get it changed.
Okay. All right. So, Kristin, you're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I knew that, we could have just, we could have let you go early, but.
Now, you got a whole bunch from the fire department.
Right. All right, so we've got that change on Article 1, which is being presented by the. So, we have the next article, 2, 3, 4.
5 and 6.
5 and 6 are all with the fire department.
Yes, so the some retirements.
Okay, yep. Cash, free cash, buyback.
Then there's a request, Article 3 is a request for a new fire engine.
Okay.
Let's see, number 4 is for archival services. They have a room in the fire department that's pretty stacked with.
Piles.
Yeah.
Documents.
Yeah, so they're looking into getting, you know, I don't know if it's King Information Systems or.
Yes, that's, that's who we work with.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's been used here at the Town Hall.
Yeah. Yeah, so they'll, hopefully, if that passes, they can get that situated.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
I haven't been there in a while.
I was going to say, has anybody been and seen the stack of papers?
The connect, the connect. Yep, good. Yeah, definitely. Okay, so 5 is?
The next one, Article 5, is like Charlie said earlier.
Yep.
The fire department's going out to bid for ambulance billing. This will give them the authority to sign a five-year contract instead of a three-year.
Anything over three years requires a town meeting approval.
Okay, all right, yep. I think it's a chief better, you get a little bit better rate, longer, longer period of time?
We hope so, yeah. It's been a bit since we had our ambulance billing, well, RFP, so figured it would be a great opportunity to do it.
Absolutely. I agree more. And 6?
That's to fund assessment center for a promotional assessment, written exam for the ranks of deputy and lieutenant for the FY '26 year for the fire department, in the amount of $7,500.
Okay.
The next one.
We go to the police?
Contractual retirement for the police department.
All right.
And Article 8, Assessment Center for promotion of the rank Sergeant and Lieutenant for FY '26.
Okay.
The next one is to vote the salaries of elected town officers.
Okay, yeah. And I'll make a motion to change that Select Board to $3,000?
Want to amend it?
That'll get me out of here fast, I think.
Good luck with that.
Okay, sounds good.
That'll get you impeached.
I'd hope so. All right, next, again, the Select Board.
Yep, this is for contracted services with the animal control, so this, I believe, covers.
Right.
And how it's worked over.
Well, what had happened was that we, when the, working on the budget for fiscal '26, we didn't have the final contract numbers by the time we had town meeting.
Yep.
And the number came in higher than what we budgeted. We needed to put more money in the budget to cover the contract.
So, we're only talking $3,000 difference there. All right, 11 is salary change? Is that a change of some sort?
Right, so when we went through the recruitment process, we did not, the first few iterations, we had not gone in applicants. We needed to increase the salary to a level that would attract Karen or anybody else. Very happy Karen accepted, but at a salary level that we had not previously budgeted.
All right. And this isn't just for, this, this is every year going forward, I would assume, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, it will be whatever the contract is between her and the library directors, trustees.
Sounds good. All right, IT has?
This is Phase 3 of 3 for IT replacing the townwide user devices, their computers, laptops.
Okay.
So, this should be it for now. I would think it would have to be done in a few more years, but.
All right. 13, we're trying to change amendments to town bylaws through the.
This is the police department.
The department, okay.
Right, so when we approved the solicitation bylaw last year, we didn't realize that you also, if you were going to do fingerprinting as part of that bylaw, which we're going to be doing, you needed to have a fingerprint bylaw. So, this is a fingerprint bylaw.
Okay.
Rebecca, in Section 2, you've still got Seaconc Police Department in there.
Well, they're going to do it.
Yeah, that's good.
Are they going to pay for it?
Got a side deal there. Good pickup there, Carol. Not that we took it from them, just, she was thinking about Seaconc at the time.
So, we had the solicitation by the door-to-door sales. As part of that, there's an ID process to verify people who are, who they are, criminal history records and such. Part of that certification process involves getting the fingerprints from the people applying for the door-to-door solicitation.
Okay.
In order to do that, we needed to have a specific bylaw regarding how we do fingerprints.
Okay.
All right.
Can we add to this exactly where we're changing? So, like, what part of the bylaw?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be under Part 12 Criminal History Check Authorization.
So, it'll be under that, and, and nothing's getting moved, or?
No. I'll check again, but.
I'll check.
Maybe just plus the number, where it goes off at?
Yeah, because it just go at the end of Part 12. Because I've been trying to actually go through ours and update it, and it's a nightmare since things were done, and like, we have 213s, and.
Right, right, right.
And then, if there's a spelling mistake, I still have to put it in.
Right, oh, okay. Usually when that, usually when you add to the bylaws, it would be, you know, it should be printed in the beginning of it, and I only know this, don't ask me how I know. Actually, I know this from work, but it was like add to, or at the end of, add to at the end of section, blah, blah, blah.
Well, that's the thing is, Katie can verify. We've got a hodgepodge approach about how the bylaws are divided up per sections and parts and whatever else. And they've, they tried to put like things together, but it, as opposed to, as contrast to other communities where each distinct bylaw has, is like, you know, Chapter 1, Chapter 2.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have that.
Why?
You know the movie Chinatown?
Yes.
You know that line?
I actually don't, Charlie. I'm just kidding.
No, forget about it, Jake. It's Chinatown.
Oh, okay. Is there, is there a plan to get, not that I don't want to get off track here. Is there a plan to organize those? I'm asking just so that, because it sounds like if we have something that does go chapter by chapter and in section by section, that that.
That one makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Hey, you know we're talking about bylaws, right?
Yes, I, I just, to have for record, because going forward, like, if that's going to be an issue, you know, adding things on, I'm thinking this needs to be an organizational, you know, it's kind of like the things, well, but this has been going on for years? Yes, okay, well, let's adjust that then, if that sounds wrong.
So, next door, you know, we had everything in alphabetical order, but you, you know, you use numbers from, let's say, 1 to 250, so that there was always room in the As So next door, you know, we had everything in alphabetical order, but you, you know, you used numbers from, let's say, one to two-hundred-and-fifty, so that there was always room in the As if there was another bylaw starting with A, it's like doing house numbers.
Yeah.
This, we don't have anything like that.
But to make changes like that, like, the whole document would have to be, go through an overhaul, and then it would have to be brought to town meeting, vote on any change. So it's not like, we can just say like, oh, well, let's rearrange it.
Oh, change it and fix it, yeah.
So it makes sense.
Yeah, you can't make any, but I think, to your point, I do think that it does need to get reviewed, and there is, there is other towns that, that have looked at their bylaws and organized them.
Okay.
So I think that, looking at, I'm literally looking at it right now, and just trying to prepare for the next one.
Yeah.
And I think we definitely could.
And Katie and I will both check. As far as now, we do not have Part Twelve. We have eleven parts, and this would be Part Twelve, but we'll both check. If we're, if I'm wrong, we'll find, we'll give it an appropriate part number.
Yeah, yeah. And the only reason I ask that is because I know how frustrating it can be once you have stuff like this added in, and then if it's added in the incorrect section, it might be out of order, so that's why I'm asking, but, okay, sorry.
Nope. Good point. Okay, fourteen, we're gonna change out some dump trucks, DPW.
This is for the DPW lease.
Right, so it'll be a lease purchase of the dump trucks, similar to the one we did with the police vehicles back in May. I think this was John's intention to begin with, but he didn't realize that town me, just as we have to approve any bonds at town meeting, any lease purchases have to be approved at town meeting. So although he has the money for Chapter Ninety, to actually do the lease purchase, he needs town meeting approval.
Fifteen, Chris over at the Vittins.
Yeah, this is, it's similar to the tax work-off program that the COA-
Okay.
Has. This would be specific for veterans, or if the veteran is deceased, they're surviving spouse, it allows them to get a tax break when volunteering.
Okay, that's a good deal.
I know that Paula and Chris are talking about this, because everything like this has a budget impact, even though it-
Of course, yeah.
In the sense of the more abatements that we give out, and it's, I'm sure a worthy program, but the more abatements we give out is the less tax money that's coming in, which means it has an impact on the budget. So I think if the town's gonna go forward, they, I need, I would recommend before the town meeting occurs, that it be some discussion possibly on the sixth-
Yep.
Or the twentieth, to talk about how large a program we're talking about.
An impact statement of some sort, right. Yep, makes sense. Okay, then we move into sixteen, conservation.
They are requesting to appoint three associate members for a term of one year.
One year?
Yeah, each for, yeah, a one-year term.
Okay.
Each for one-year term. So I believe that right now they have seven members and want to add the associate members.
But it also codifies, in fact, that they have seven members and everything to do with the Conservation Commission. There's not, in the bylaws, there's not a section about the Conservation Commission and what its composition should be, and how long the terms are, and everything like that. Even though the town accepted the statute established in the Conservation Commission decades ago, there's nothing in the bylaw saying all this information, so we're getting it into the bylaw. And there is already a, remember we talked about Part Twelve? There is a Part Two that has sections, for instance, about the Finance Committee, as an example, under officials, boards, departments, and committees, and employees, and so we'll add the letter X. There's obviously A through W already, so we'll get to X with adding the Conservation Commission, or unless that's ten, that might be ten, in which case, a Roman numeral ten, it's, yeah, in which case we've done one through nine.
Is in the bylaws, if they were just adding this language.
To the, to the-
I'll check, yeah.
Okay. Good luck with that. Okay, seventeen, is a town bylaw change of replacement here?
Right, we're, later this fall and into the winter, we're gonna be reviewing fees and licenses.
Yep.
Many of them haven't been updated in decades. In fact, the $50 fee that we charged decades ago, when it was established through a bylaw, I talked to Chris about this, once it's established by a bylaw, the only way we can change it is changing the bylaw. Generally, for instance, we don't have alcohol licenses in the bylaws, so the board could change the fees for alcohol licenses without going to town meeting. Given inflation, since the $50 fee was established, we would be charging something on the order of $135. So even at $100, it's not actually going all the way up to inflation, but I think it was a, it's a fairly dramatic change, relatively speaking, you know, just from 50 to 100.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Planning Board, let's see, oh, this is, okay, this is the district change, stuff they were sectioning they want to change in the-
Right, Roy and Kevin had talked with you all about this a couple weeks ago.
Yes, this is in regard to the zoning, to have similar zoning to like Whitman Down, Whitman's downtown.
Yeah, mixed use stuff. Eighteen and nineteen are somewhat together there, okay. That sounds good. Twenty, section-
Would allow on, sorry.
Go ahead.
Would allow on-premises sales of alcohol. So in restaurants, they could start serving mimosas, for instance, on Sunday at ten, probably.
Oh, the change, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Twelve, as an example. I know we've had a number of inquiries during the last couple of years, and we realized we had never accepted the statute-
Right.
That would allow the board to do this. Then if we accept the statute, the board then on, on a license-by-licensed basis could vote to allow an early, sort of opening, so to speak, early sales.
Okay. And twenty-one is the potential change in the number of licenses, is what this one is here?
Right, so, I don't know, where's Section Two went? Oh, there, we have the breakout, Section Two, in the middle, Section One. We had, the Select Board's office probably received three or four inquiries in the last couple of years.
Yep.
We're, have a quota of licenses that the board can issue for off-premise package store licenses, and the only way to increase that number is to have town meeting or a request for special legislation to increase the number in our quota.
Yep.
So this is the start of that process. Whether the town wants to do that, that's gonna be up to town meeting.
Yep, I like, I think it's smart, absolutely. Twenty-two is a, is a carryover to the same thing, or somewhat the same?
It's slightly different in that if you have the wine and malt beverage license-
Yeah.
This will allow you to sell liquors and cordials, which are very, very small amounts of alcohol.
Okay.
It's usually done as part of an on-premise sale of other goods and such.
Right, okay. All right, yeah.
One question I have, I'm sorry, Peter.
Go ahead, no, no.
One question I have is, do you know which, which folks are looking to have licenses, or which, what is it called? If we go over the quota, for example, I know the legislators will specifically need the information that is like, you know, we need this because X, Y, and Z restaurant reached out and have requested that.
We can get the listed.
People come to May, people come down there, yeah, so.
Perfect. Because they won't just approve it if it's not like, oh.
Yeah, I think this is step one of a couple of steps.
Of that process, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna get through town first, and then once the town says that they approve it, then we have to go the next step, I would assume, and see what happens. At least we're giving them the opportunity, the businesses that have reached out. Because I didn't know you couldn't buy, not that I was buying in them, but, you know, you go down to the, like, the Joppa Market or whatever, you can get beer and wine, but you can't get, like, high nudes.
Right.
I didn't vote.
As is the vodka.
High noon is vodka.
Yeah, I'm just assuming, I see people take it.
You should ask me, I would've told you.
Right, I didn't, I didn't know that. I thought that was, no, I guess I see a can.
Well, because some of them are, like, a white malt, I think is like a, is a malt beverage.
Okay.
Some of them are-
I wonder if the alcohol content's different than a beer than it is with, can't be that much difference, is there? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know. I'll check the cans that are in the camper, I'll go.
Let me know, yeah, let me know.
So I have, do we ask any questions about these?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Is it okay if I ask a couple?
It is, absolutely okay. All right, go ahead, yeah.
So, one thing I wanted to ask the fire chief, can you come up? Is it okay? Sorry. Just because I know Zach will yell about the microphone, so.
That's why I'm here.
So, I know we've had these conversations, but I think it's good to have it on record of, of where that free cash is going to in Article Two. I know we mentioned retirees, contractual obligations for sick buybacks. Now, can you explain like the effects that that payment would have for your department in a, in a good way, for the town, basically?
I'm, I'm sorry, how the payment would?
Yeah, so the six, or not payment, but the, the $70,000, I know that is contractual buyback and for retirees, that, folks that have retired-
Yes.
That, that's the money that they are-
Yes, an incentive that they are owed contractually.
Right.
So one has already retired, two are actually in the process of retiring, so it's kind of preemptive to make sure that the money's available. So we don't have them retired, and then months down the road, we have to wait to-
To do that.
Annual time meeting to get that, yeah. So it's beneficial to us. One's been waiting-
Right.
Since May, so.
And then, what was the other one? I had a question. Okay, yeah, for Article Four, could you explain that to us, if that's okay? I know it's for the $10,000 from free cash to the department?
Yeah, that's for the records retention.
Okay.
So that is, we have a large area, which I think I walked you through. We have records dating, dating back to the beginning of time from the fire department that aren't organized, they're just basically in piles. So right now, if anyone were to come to the fire department and do a public information request, or look for information about a particular address-
Right.
We wouldn't really be able to provide it. We may have this information, so this company comes in, and they sift through it, and they look through the state's record retention program to make sure that we're holding on to what we need to destroy the right way, stuff that we don't need to carry around, and then we can kind of clean out the area. They also devise a plan for us to file this stuff moving forward, and set us up with the process of being able to keep records for extended periods of time, and when time comes that if we can get rid of them, we can.
Right.
Plus a database that we can actually pull records from. So it's, it really helps out the department to kind of clean up a bit of a mess that we have.
And I'm assuming the, the stuff you got going forward, Chief, is, that's how you're doing it now, information's getting inputted instead of filed in a cabinet or whatever?
Some of it, and we have online database. So part of the 911 grant that we just got is a new record management system, so that is gonna be through a cloud-based system, so it's really easy to go online to find it. And some of this actually puts it into a cloud-based system as well that we can pull from-
Right.
From the data.
Right.
Yeah, so going forward, we're kind of set up, but we have just this long historical amount.
Right, I can't even imagine what, how far it dates back.
I, I, that's why I wanted to bring you up for this one specifically, because that, it, going to the fire department, and for anybody that's listening at home, it's, it is an immense amount of records. Like, there's a whole room filled to the brim, and boxes filled with like the plans of everything that I've seen, and I think, you know, when we're talking about organization and having things, being able to look back on, on records and needing them, especially, it sounds kind of crazy, I think, if you don't actually see the amount of records, but it is kind of like startling, the amount that we saw. I was like, wow, this is insane, so.
We actually got rid of thirty-seven boxes recently, that stuff that could be destroyed, and we got rid of that, and it's still, it's still a lot of information, so. And it'd be nice to have it, you know, better record-keeping for that moving forward.
I think it's important, I mean, for what I would assume is, you know, a small pay-
Not a lot of money.
A small money versus what it could do for the department.
Yeah, the company that we got the quote from is, is a reputable company in the area, and like I said, I think they've done work here in town before, which is kind of why we went and looked and talked to them about it. But thank you for asking about that.
Yeah, I remember going up there in the attic of the fire department, and I was like, wow, this is insane, so.
It's a lot.
I think those are the other questions. I had a police question, that's the other one, but he's not, Chief Jenkins.
Give him a call, I'll give you his cell number.
He may not be reachable.
There he will, if you call him, he'll be-
Actually, one more question for you, I'm sorry, Chief. Lieutenant, do you guys have a lieutenant position right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so our shift officers, we have three shift lieutenants and a shift captain.
Okay.
So with the upcoming deputy retirement, the thought is we're probably gonna be losing an officer to maybe take over that deputy position, which would then we'd need to backfill-
Okay.
That role, so that's why-
Did he give you a date yet?
I, he's said it a few times, I haven't listened.
Good call, right?
It's in January.
January, I knew it was January, I just didn't know if he had a-
Yeah, I, I can't remember exactly the date. Like I said, I'm ignoring it.
Yeah, it's a good idea, right.
But yeah, so that's why there's in there for the lieutenant and deputy. So the deputy assessment would be obviously to replace Deputy Windsor, and then backfilling if in fact a lieutenant were to take that spot.
Perfect. All right, those are the main questions, sorry. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just-
No, I appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
No, we're good, thank you very much for coming in, too. Appreciate it.
I'm the only one that has three more questions.
No, it's good questions, good stuff. I'd like to know what's going on. Nope, not at all. Not at all. Anything else?
No, I think the one thing to note on here is, I believe the, yeah, Article Eight, the town will vote to transfer free cash, some of $18,000 professional services to fund promotional assessment centers for ranks of sergeant and lieutenant. I don't think there are any lieutenant positions in the police department right now, if I'm mistaken, correct, right? So from my understanding, if this, to be able to have a lieutenant in there would be like a kind of a strategic change, and I know Chief Jenkins can speak more to that, but I think it's a good idea, so, but I did see that in there.
Well, if you'd like him to come in-
Oh, yeah, we'll get him, we'll have, I'll ask, yeah.
Yep, good. Are you good?
Yes.
All right, that's it. Anything else?
You have your script?
I do have my script, yeah.
Unless-
Oh, what about the November terms?
Oh, yeah, I don't think there's much other than just that.
It's just the one article, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And the wording came from-
Well, we're adding the MSBA stuff to this, too, aren't we? We're gonna throw that in here, just kidding, it's a joke, it's a joke, easy, tough crowd tonight, tough crowd.
No joke about this.
Yes, no, just the school, yes, school, Monday, November tenth. All right, yeah, I don't think we need to go, we're good on that, right? Be there, everybody will be there, was it tomorrow, Tuesday, for the public forum? Say it one more time.
Central School, Cafeteria.
Central School, Cafeteria.
Six o'clock.
Light, light refreshments, something like that?
Not that I'm aware.
No central school cookies.
That's what I was saying, like a sipping, sipping info, you know?
All right, all right, well, could've told them yes, and then, don't get them, they don't get them. All right, all right, that being said, let's move into my damn script. I'll make a motion. I move that the Spidrow Select Board go into executive session for the following reasons pursuant to match in the law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One, Eight-Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining positions of the Select Board for collective bargaining with the following unions: Superior Officers, Clerical, DPW Patrol Officers, pursuant to match in the law, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty-One, Eight-Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to litigation, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the Select Board in the following litigation, Ridda Farm, Inc., versus Town of East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, Docket Number Two-three-eight-three-CV-oh-oh-eight-six-seven, and that the Select Board will not reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session. Confirm that, is the Chair, Peter Spigone, Jr., seconded by-
Second, Carol Julius.
Julius. All in favor? Discussion? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. I declare that having an open meeting on collective bargaining and litigation may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the Select Board, confirmed by me, Peter Spigone. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I, Peter Spigone.
I, Carol Julius.
I, Catherine Maugh.
Thank you, and good night.